Good evening, everyone. I want to welcome everyone to the Tuesday, February 4th, 2025, meeting of the Douglas Board of Selectmen. It's now seven o'clock. We could all stand for the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all.
Back again to lead us.
Need to lead.
And hesitation now.
Yeah, you're stepping on my chairman's announcements, but all is right in the world, Lisa. It was good to see you back, and we certainly missed you, but I know you worked diligently when you could from home. And to your colleagues that filled in, they did a wonderful job, but no one can replace the great Lisa. In the spirit of harmony, I just want to thank Mike for filling in for me last week as I battled what we'll call the Southwest Airlines cold. No one's fault but my own for traveling. And we're moving right along. My understanding is we're going to talk about the Stakeholder Committee in two weeks. Les, I know we're not really going to take action here, but are you satisfied with the document you've created?
Yeah, the committee met since August, several, like, twice, twice a month, and made a lot of rounds back and forth, some actually key votes and key decisions. Nothing kind of was unanimous or slam dunk. So there was a good debate all around and some good changes. And Matt Benoit was able to keep us on track with the timeline and get something presentable. So along with Nick, the consultant, presented a map, I think, you know, so we could meet the minimum requirement for the MS4 permit.
On my way here, I was thinking, it's been a full 15 years since the town initially started discussing stormwater. And maybe it took 15 years to get something that's acceptable to the town. We'll find out, but we'll discuss this more in a couple of weeks. Moving on to the local cultural council. Is Mrs. Duane out here?
Yes.
Come on up, ma'am. Good evening.
Hello.
So this is where we awkwardly, yeah, please have a seat.
Give you the once-over.
Yeah. We grill you good. And certainly will most likely certainly welcome you, but please tell us a little bit about yourself.
Well, I always feel like I've been a part of this town. My mother was born and raised here. I moved here myself in '84, except for a few years. I've been here since. I just, this is, my soul belongs here. Even though I never lived here until 1984, I get my birth certificate here. The day I was born, my parents lived on B Street. The morning I went in, she went into the hospital to have me, while she was in the hospital having me, the family moved to Bellingham.
Oh, no kidding.
But since they lived here, when she went into the hospital, I get my birth certificate here. So I suppose in that regard, I'm a pretty unique citizen of the town, but I've always felt like it's been home here. I've been involved with the Historical Society. I was on that board for a while. My own decision, I came off. My life was getting too busy. Thankfully, it slowed down again. And that's about it. I've been here, like I said, roughly since '84, except for a couple of years. If there's anything in particular you'd like to know, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
You were lucky to find them when they moved to Bellingham.
Pardon?
You were lucky to find them when they moved to Bellingham.
She might not be here tonight.
Yeah.
It was actually a little village in Bellingham, Caryville. There was a bowling mill, which like there is here. And, you know, my parents worked there. And I believe they had bought the house that we moved to. So it was nice there. I lived there for 12 years and then Milford for several years. And I've been in Douglas, like I said, since roughly '84.
Wonderful. Any other questions from the board? None?
Well, I like to learn little things about the town, get to know a few new people. I'm kind of off by myself up there in my little apartment, but I kind of like to know a little what's going on.
Oh, I'm in the same boat. I've worked from home before. Working from home was a cool thing for 20 some odd years. If I didn't come to Town Hall every so often, I don't know if anyone would know who I was. So that does highlight a real important part to volunteerism, and that is a sense of community. And with that, I strongly support the board's recommendation to appoint you.
I'll make a motion to appoint Jean Duane out to the Local Cultural Council. I was looking for her.
Three-year term.
Three-year?
For a three-year term.
Made by Ross, seconded by Hal. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is unanimous? Thank you.
I have one question. I don't know where or when they meet, the council.
I can get you that information tomorrow.
Okay. You want me to give you a call?
I believe so.
Nope. I'll reach out to you in the morning, and I'll have your letter ready for your swearing-in with the clerk for this position. And then I can give you the contact info for them.
All right. Thank you. All right.
Yeah. Lisa's back. Here we go. Got it covered.
Thank you very much.
The ship has its writer now.
No offense, Matt.
Lisa's job.
Yeah.
Well, I was looking forward to hearing from Lisa.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Ross, she has a little onboarding packet that has all of that information, but it's good to verbalize.
Yeah, I just couldn't find the.
Very good. Moving on to number seven, my understanding is we're going to hold off on that until the following week. And with Mr. Skinner not here, that makes sense for where I sit.
The Republican Nation never came in for the alternate position. So I kind of don't.
So since we're going to table this, he checked our full member. This will be actually for an alternate.
It'll be an alternate.
Nice catch. Number eight, Northeast Main at North Street intersection discussion and follow-up. My understanding is we have a couple of signs that have been brought before us. Have we chosen one, Matt, or is that our job?
Well, you have to approve it. Adam went and checked with Mastot. There are no requirements on these. So the design that is in your packet is what is being recommended. It was up to me. There'd be the Great Wall of China on this corner, and nobody would even think of taking a turn, but it can't be that draconian. Hopefully, the truck drivers will honor the sign.
Obviously, it's landmines ahead. One from North Street and one from Northeast Main. They'll figure it out.
Is there wiping up the state signs?
So this sign's pretty straightforward. I have a hard time believing.
Not too much ambiguity yet.
Yeah. Pretty cut and dry.
Just for the record, because I don't know if it was publicized, but the drivers who did damage those signs have made restitution. So all that signage that is part of the state's inventory will be replaced, but not at taxpayer expense. People took them out. Sighted will be paid its back.
So is Adam looking for our approval of these two fine sites?
Signage is one of your exciting tasks in that role.
Make a motion to approve the suggested recommended signs by the highway superintendent for both a no-right turn for trucks coming from Northeast Main and a no-left turn for trucks coming off of North Street.
Made by Mike, seconded by Ross. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous? Looking forward to seeing those. Not that we need more, but I guess we do. We have two grant acceptances. One's a $15,500 grant for fiscal year '25 for firefighter safety equipment, and another grant for same-year 25-911 training for $9,571.32. Pretty straightforward. Any particular caveats with these grants that we should be aware of?
No, the, these are both, I don't want to say routine, because the fire department has to apply for this. There's a competitive process. I don't know if 911 training is formula grant or if it's competitive, but we are very much in the habit of getting that year in, year out.
They look familiar. Move approval. I got to learn my terminology. Yes, I guess I did make that motion. Seconded by Hal. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Accepted. Are we keeping track of those in a nice place still, Matt? I know we talked about that. Cool. Hard to believe, but we're opening a warrant for the annual town meeting and the special town meeting currently slated for May 5th, 2025. Anything in our packet that we may have discussed earlier, but we'll discuss in a couple of weeks. Just let townspeople know that the warrant is open with a motion.
I'll make a motion to open the warrant for the annual town meeting and special town meeting for May 5th, 2025.
Made by Les, seconded by Ross. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving right along to minutes. Got a couple here. I will say I did watch the First Amendment Protection Agency come to town, and the officer bloody ass did a really nice job.
Yeah, he did.
Now my U2 feed is covered with that and some situations out of Canton. But really, I mean, the breadth of freedom runs deep in Douglas, and I'm very proud of that.
I'll make a motion to approve the January 7th, 2025, minutes.
Made by Les. Well, seconded. Seconded by Ross. All those in favor?
Aye.
To January 21.
I'll stay on that.
In the absence of dead air, I will play grammar police and just point out that the third line contains a couple of extra characters that probably can be deleted.
I'll make a motion to approve January 21st, minutes for the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you, Les.
Second.
Seconded by Mike. Be good, Ross?
I'm good.
Yeah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And one extension. And moving on, Matt, to municipal light plant discussion. Has there been anything of note since we last talked about it?
So the, what I took from our last board meeting was instruction to build a business case and start to narrow down what different options would cost and what the factors are. So we had a meeting with an energy sector developer that we've worked with for quite a while now on different proposals. And learned a few things, certainly. The business case that we would do for a data center would include the co-location of a substation with the computer center with battery array close by and a sufficiently sized power plant. The taxation of those different assets is slightly different, and the value proposition for each type of facility is different. So Chris Pumpka's working up. So what we've done is we tried to find some analogous cases, so actual Massachusetts municipalities that are dealing with these assets and what their valuation is. In this Commonwealth of Massachusetts and in most states, the valuation of electric grid assets is uniform across the entire state. So we can plug and play once we know what somebody's getting for taxable value for a substation. And then the other business case, the second business case, is logistics development. So we are actually quite familiar with what that costs. What in the world is going to go on with the logistics industry based on some of the political trends and economic trends around the world is kind of hard to say, because you could, it's not really possible to forecast exactly how people are going to respond to changes in tariff policy and other foreign relationships. Because one strategy would be to build lots of warehouses and hoard stuff, right? So you can actually have a supply of the things you need. Another possibility is that from the medium to long term, those buildings would be empty if they're not handling as much cross-border traffic and we're not getting the goods that we might want to sell. Or if the economy slows down because of inflation. So we're going to parse that out a little bit more, but we know per square foot values and some of the other issues posed by that. So we're making progress on those things. Sort of formally ask the assessor to put together his best information today. So I think at your next meeting, we'll have a rough outline of the revenue potential and the timing of different forms of projects. That's all I have.
How about the Chinese AI advances? Does that, it looks like may not need as much power as we thought.
So I read a lot the first couple of days, and anything Selectman Stevens knows more currently than I do, I'm willing to listen. But it was a very impressive achievement. They managed to replicate or create literally billions of parameters for the AI to function within with chips that are relatively modest, because we don't allow the Chinese to have our best chips. Some of the innovations the Chinese made were really greatly enhancing the efficiency of the use of the chips that they do have. So there's no downtime in running things in strings and running processes simultaneously wherever they can. So they improved some of those things. Now, I've heard since then, a little bit of blowback that maybe the Chinese AI wasn't as robust. Like, it impressed at first, coming from car salesmen, right? It impressed you at first. And then when you started digging that way at it, it may not have been that great. It is still a language learning model, so it is still has a limitation. It's not regenerative AI. It's using probability and statistics to forecast what the next word will be in a sentence. And I think what a lot of Americans fail to realize is that the Chinese don't have to build the best of anything. They just have to build something that works for other people. And most of our models are based on the English language, because that's who we are, and that's who we think everybody should learn. The Chinese are building this stuff to recognize Urdu and Bengali and lots of languages all around the world in order to achieve a foreign policy goal of forming stronger relationships with Third World countries and some of the bigger.
Still, we're all just.
And to isolate us. And so there's that that we need to pay attention to. But in terms of what impact it's going to have on us, yeah, some people would full-on panic around the industry. Like, if we want to keep our advantage over these guys, we have to just move that much more quickly. And there's no doubt in my mind at all that the current administration of Washington is going to prioritize this. They're going to see state regulations and some other things pushed aside or held back in order for the country to meet its goals. AI obviously has huge potential in military applications. And we don't want to fall too far behind the Chinese when it comes to that. That's pretty far afield, but what you're asking is, you know, do we think the data center industry is going to be robust? I think the answer is yes. But we'll be much more formal next time. Because the numbers are so big, I don't really want to speculate. So one thing that we asked, I do think I should share now, is we've been worried that building a substation may be impractical or difficult, because transformers and the things you need to build the station might be hard to get. And that scuttlebutt is probably overstated. And some of the bigger companies that are building data centers have pretty good access to anything they need from the market. They're pretty much first in line for a lot of those components. So if a data center investor were involved, we probably would see a substation built at their expense and within a reasonable amount of time.
Are we too small for basing this on the needs of the town for electricity as an out-cheaper way of?
To use Evans' exact words, "The town of Douglas's energy needs are rounding error."
Costs were probably a lot less when some of the smaller towns went in to develop their own municipal light plants.
It was a completely different world. You're talking about, so that was 100 years ago, the last time it was done. So a lot of those plants were coal plants or coal gasification plants?
The gas mostly, no, I think.
A lot of them have switched over to gas, but they already had existing footprint. They were permitted. It's a different ball of wax. We'd be starting from scratch. I know that there's some, I can report under the same agenda item, some consternation or some scrambling in the town of Westfield, because while they do have a plan to build a data center and a second power plant in the town of Westfield, they negotiated their agreements with the developer, their tax increment finance deals and their other economic incentives, before the legislature passed its incentive bill. So the town may have given up some things they would not have given up if they had known the state was going to do what it did. So hopefully, I think most people are reasonable. Maybe the developer will come back to the table and say, we're just trying to save X dollars, rather than taking advantage of everything. But it is a legally binding approval agreement.
So Westfield, so are the Mile.
They're the ones that are leading the way, because they've already permitted their second plan. So that's what they say. We haven't been able to find the paperwork, but that's what we're told. Again, it's easier. When you have an existing campus and you already have a plan.
Dead.
You're doing something different than greenfield development, brand new, tapping a line. It's just a different story. But we'll learn as much from them as we can. But that's all I have. No sort of more questions.
Any general thoughts from the board?
Just a comment that there's still going to be a big need for data centers, and I'm glad we're at least investigating the opportunity to, you know, root it out. Regarding the batteries, they're both internal to the data center as well as external. So they're almost like a mini tractor-trailer truck. The outside box.
Mike?
I'm still waiting to hear what the options are.
No, I know.
No, that's what I'm looking for, that information before I go any further. There's never really not much to comment on until you know what the pieces are.
Well, there is in a couple of aspects, man-hours spent on this right now, marginal. Anything, Hal? Or else?
I'm just, I'm open-minded, but I just want to, I need more information. That's all. Digest, that's all.
Definitely worth pursuing at this stage.
May be a good segue into item number 13, if we're good with 12. And that would be the Board of Selectmen 2025 Goals, Town Goals, Town Administrative Goals Discussion. Just get off municipal light plant for a second and apologize to Les. Les had indicated to me that he wanted to talk about some things and to place it on the agenda. And to be honest with you, I approved this agenda without even thinking about it. So still under the purview, Les, if you want to.
Yeah. I guess, you know, we're going to segue under the goals and stuff like that. I think, you know, Chris Pumpka came before us with Jean and stuff like that. We talked about the Arrows Act around the tax exemption for seniors who are homeowners as well as veterans, and seeing if we want to probably in a future meeting, put that on our agenda maybe, because we have the target for the spring for that tax exemption. If you don't recall, it's in our packet, so I can give you the date of when Chris came before us. But hasn't been updated since the 1980s, when Reagan was in office and stuff like that. So I don't want to put anything else out there, but I know Jean came before us as well as Chris. You know, I think it'd be worthwhile to maybe revisit it and see if we want to put that on spring. So on the goal side, I think, you know, there's probably looking at, you know, offloading some of the, you know, the grammar school and probably removing some of the footprints that have a liability to the town, such as the 21 Main Street and stuff like that, the Roundhouse, because I think it's just would be in the best interest to kind of create more green spaces in that area. And, you know, continue with the grant process. I think the amount of grants that we've been able to bring in, it's been, you know, very refreshing, because I think, you know, several years, I'll say, ago, we never even heard, never even heard of the word grant at times, you know? And it was always, we were a forgotten child, a forgotten town in a lot of ways. So I think the.
It's just an old present.
Yeah, I think it's just continue, continue with that progress and stuff like that. I think it's a benefit to our community. And, you know, any other, you know, refreshing ideas as we move the town forward and try to help out the tax base and improve our roads slowly as we go?
Ross?
Well, a couple of things, I guess. One thing, I don't know if it's a goal, but I'll just mention, was approached by a resident who actually puts a little bit of effort into downtown, a little Christmas walk. I apologize for getting back to this person in a delayed manner. I was under the weather and pretty busy with Burke, but she's looking to look forward to a 250th anniversary of America, 1776 to 2026, possibly a parade. Possibly a parade or whatnot. It was just a general idea that was thrown across. And I think it's a great idea and I'd like to see something like that come to fruition. I think it would also bring spirit into the town and bring the town community together
I like that, like discussing that early and maybe setting up a little subcommittee or something. You don't have to do all the work, but outline what the town should do.
Yep.
So I would, I think that would be a prudent thing. Will you take the, well?
I would, I would be willing to get involved in it because I, I rarely believe in that and things like that, you know? So I think.
Make a motion to appoint Ross into spearheading that movement.
Unsolicited work.
You're going to stick your neck up.
He's almost finished with the master plan.
Motion paid by Mike, second by Hal for America's birthday celebration. All those in favor?
Aye.
I officially dubbed you the chairman of the party.
All right, make it happen.
Mike?
Nothing at the moment.
Nothing at the moment?
No.
You're good?
Yep.
All right. So I would certainly support the, the birthday. The thing I don't want to lose sight of Matt is the need for the highway bard, right? So balancing that with the municipal light discussion, all the economic development that we're looking to do while running the most, you know, transparent government possible is a goal that I have sitting here. And I think we're doing a, a good job with that in regards to last year proposal. I'd like to see that on Matt's budget as a policymaking board. You know, we oftentimes will talk about taxation and that we've at some point would like to alleviate some of those taxes. This is, this is something that the town, I think, can afford. While in some respects, it's symbolic, it's, it's an opportunity to act on some symbolism and maybe make the lives of, you know, a few folks anyway, maybe a little, little less hectic. So I know we'll be discussing budgets moving forward, but I would like to see that as well. Matt, in regards to the actual document, are there any things in there now that just cause you agita that are just either not possible or outdated, things that you generally don't see value in?
I'll go back over it to be blunt. I haven't looked at it in a long time. I have three things to add because they are joint goals with you. One of them is a senior work off program policy. The senior work off program is very popular here in town. We have quite a few people who are eligible. They come, they work for basically the minimum wage. They're not really paid a check, comes off the tax bill, and it's capped. It's gotten so popular that the lack of a policy is now clear, right? There are more people that want to participate than there are slots available for them. We're thinking of consolidating a lot of the command and control over this program out of the departments and in the administrator's office because, you know, under the statu-, under the statute, I am the personnel director, so it is my responsibility to have job descriptions and making sure that people are interviewed and that there's a fair process for filling those slots. The second thing that I would put on this list is a successful transition of our health benefit program. I say that because it's a basic job requirement for me, but it is the successful completion with minimal disruption to our employees is the real goal. It's not just switching, it's doing it well. And forming a new program that's as strong or stronger than the one we've left. And I think that's important to a lot of people on staff, so that's an item. And lastly, to shop under some arrangement with the select board, our property casualty business, it's time to have that discussion again. It was such a scintillating topic last time. And, you know, it was hard to get you guys to switch topics because you just wanted to keep talking about it, you can tell. Joking, it was brutal, but at the end of the day, for those of you who were on the board at the time, who are still here, you learned a lot about our, the program that Maya puts forth. You'll be interested to know that some of the things that you really valued the last time we went through have been changed by Maya. So the value proposition is different. And our premiums are at this point indefinitely high. So we're coming into the budget season, the number I have in the budget for property casualty insurance, which includes everything, workers' comp, IOD for uniformed public safety, the typical property casualty liability for our buildings and vehicles. It's 609,000. That's up from about 359,000 about five, six years ago. Some of that is the result of some very large claims that have come through our account that are dropping off. So now when a new bidder wants to do an analysis of our run of claims, they will not see those big claims, they're too old. So I would tell you it is impossible, but I would probably be corrected by somebody in the note to say it's not impossible, just 99% unlikely that Maya would ever readjust our, our premium on this result. They're not. It doesn't even seem like they're inclined to hold it flat. So in order to provide the budget conversation with the necessary information, I need to shop this right away. And I, I thought we had already voted, you had already voted to tell me to do this, but I'm not sure Mr. Stevens was on the board at the time. So I would, and I need you guys to re-vote that so that it is the sitting board that is.
I remember we had presentations from outside people.
Oh, yeah, you did. No, more recently, I wouldn't say within the last eight or nine months, may have been before May.
What was it?
An authorization for me to put out to bid the property casualty insurance.
Yeah, that was a while back. That was before, before last May.
Yeah. We talked about it, you know, a few months ago.
So I'm going to change the dates. I'm going to, you know, maybe tweak it here and there, but I'm not really going to torture this, I'm just going to put it back out. So there are two, this is not up for vote tonight, so it's on my goals, but it's also considered a part of my report. There are two alternative approaches you can take. You could conduct the investment, the scoring of the bidders yourself after asking all of your own questions in open session of them. We could refine that conversation by making sure the RFP has issues that you care about the most actually posed as questions. So you would have answers to some of those things to read before you have the interviews in public. Looking at the way the process ran last time, though, one alternative that frankly makes the most sense to me is to have a broker place your business or you could describe to the broker, look, we want no fewer than five or six respondents to this. And we want you to narrow it down to three finals. So you would still be interviewing, you would still be making the final choice. But what a broker can do, because they speak the language of the industry, is really, really hammer the respondents to get a, what is called a final, a last investment. That is typically what is done in the brokerage world. They get the first pass, then they'll have a couple more passes and then finally say, what is your final attempt to get this business? And they kind of play off, play everybody off against each other. Be mindful of the fact, this is not a 30B process. We can mimic the 30B process if we want to, but we don't need to follow them. Purchase property casualty insurance is exempt.
How do you pick your broker?
Same thing, it's exempt. So.
Well, whether it's exempt or not, how, you just walk a broker in here or do we go through an RFP for a broker?
So what I would do is I would probably get two or three people that I trust from my experience to interview with you. Is it, I'm not going to pick the brokers, but how do you know whether you trust a broker or not? But if you had the opportunity to actually eyeball two or three people and really ask them a lot of questions and see whether or not you have rapport, at the end of the day, the important thing to remember is that under Massachusetts insurance laws, a broker does not have a future. I do, to you, and you do to the town, we all do to the town. But you have to walk into this caveat emptor, the buyer beware frame of mind, that no matter how you do it, you will, the quality of your result will be the result of asking the right questions of the right people and making your, your requirements for the program known early enough in advance where you can make sure that those things are appropriated. So.
How does a broker get paid?
Commission.
On the overall book?
Unless you go with Maya. When you go with Maya, Maya already has an arrangement. Maya is brokered through CAVRIS. So the, the guy you had here last time representing Maya is not an employee of Maya. He's a broker. David is a broker. But his brokerage sells Maya exclusively in service.
But Maya is, is going to come in higher probably because they're not giving us credit for the casualties that are.
So I don't know, this is what gets.
Or they may shop in their pencil because they have to compete.
So it's a different product, but I'm going to tell you what happened when we switched retirement plans for retired employees. We put that out to bid because we joined MSHG six years ago, five years ago for retirement. And our incumbent was toughs and they were at 389 a month. They came in and they underbid themselves. So they wanted Douglas, when Douglas was alone, we were 389, they came in and bid the group at 339. Still was way too high because the lowest bid was like 200. But the point was they actually undercut their own price that they had given us. So it's funny things happen. I'm sure Maya would, might, that might be the one scenario in which they would retreat from six or nine. They're not going to come back to 359.
How much was it the current year?
This year?
Yeah.
Five, nine. I budget a 3% increase every year. So you don't have to decide that now, I'm just, there are options out there. I can research it a lot more. I can certainly tell you who three or four brokers would be that I would be willing to work with. If I've learned anything from this experience over the last year of dealing with the health insurance side, I asked my wife the other night, I said, do you think that I have some sort of, is this the Peter Principle for me? I build organizations that are extremely successful, that a bunch of people have no business being involved, take it over, take it away from me. And it happened to me in AAU baseball, I had a bunch of parents who thought they knew more baseball than I did. It happened in adult league baseball and they all thought they were going to be better managers than me. My AAU guys, I was actually surrounded by parents a year later, of all the kids that left my team, came back to me and said, that was the biggest mistake we ever made. Our kids sat on the bench all year, they didn't enjoy baseball anymore. Some of them went on to play at really high levels, so they missed the whole year of baseball because they were idiots, thought they had a better way. My adult men's league, I had four teams, they all came the year after I left. I still got in the Hall of Fame, they all played. So with this, MSHG in my opinion isn't going to survive to next year, they'll die. And my wife told me the smartest thing, you just got to pick the right people to work with. You got to start trusting your gut more and not let these people in the door. Some of those parents on the AAU club, they, we knew they were going to be clubhouse cancers. You took them because you thought the kid was a great player. I've been doing this for a long time. And there are three or four brokers that I, I know in the industry that I trust. None of them deal with health insurance, so it wouldn't be the people I work with in that industry or they're fine. So that's not the issue. But I certainly had, because I was on the board of directors of the League of Cities and Towns on Rhode Island, I had relationships with the interlocal trust, the people who do business, who have licenses for Massachusetts, what goes with Rhode Island. So there are, I have a stronger network there than, I'm not picking names out of my hat.
Insurance in general seems to be the area where we can save the taxpayers most money potentially or?
Extremely aggressive and extremely nimble and be willing to hammer people because half the stuff they tell you won't be the full truth. And I, I wish I had better things to say about it, but in Massachusetts, it appears to be the industry that is the closest thing to the wild, wild west that you're ever going to see in the coming. Nobody's watching the store. So you have to watch your own and be very, very careful about the details of contracts, who gets paid what when, and who you're doing business with.
I remember when we reviewed all that and we did that, obviously in the open, but unknown to Maya and our apparently independent broker. Is there value of bringing him in and having him explain the increase in premium so we can express our agita before deciding whether we're going to be looking at other brokers?
I certainly think that that is a, that's a lot more respect than they're going to get in many other communities, right? It's transparent and it's fair, puts them on notice, they're going to have to shop in their pencil and then puts them in a position where they have to explain why they've made certain choices. I think one of the issues that we have in the office is we keep telling them to update their records and to do a better job of customer service and it's crickets. So I think we've told them some things. Let me put it this way. I don't like being blown off if I tell someone, you can't carry our computer hardware at 60 some odd thousand dollars of value, whatever tiny number is. When we know that the hardware in this building, if we had to replace it all, it's going to hit by a lightning strike or something terrible, it would cost three quarters of a million dollars to get all the TV equipment back in the cable office, all the mixers, all the sound equipment, the police officers, a police department's servers and other critical things as well as ours and the fire departments. There's an awful lot of stuff. So when we tell them, they come in, they say, what's your declaration for the property value? We go through it, we come up with a number and then we get the renewal and it's got the wrong numbers in it again. And it just, that sounds like a small petty thing, but here's the thing, you file a claim, are we covered or not? In a meeting, they'll swear up and down, they'll cross themselves twice, oh, no, we'll cover it, you know, but it doesn't matter. Since when do documents not matter in the insurance industry? Your declaration of value is what they're going to cover. If the place is half wiped out, that's the whole purpose of having insurance in the first place is to get the stuff back and you get your claim denied because you can't prove that you have, you know, they have the owner's manual for the new measure. So this stuff kind of drives us nuts and I think we've had some other concerns over the years. I do appreciate the recent decision to put us under a very high deductible because I think it's necessary to slow some folks down on their claims activity. Claims kill us, so you've got to stop filing a claim every time you have an issue in a building. You know, leaks, preventing leaks in your roof is part of your bleepin' job. It's not wait for it to happen and then file an insurance claim to get the money to fix something. The capital budget process is now a credible process in Douglas. There's just shy of a million bucks a year being thrown around to address long-term capital needs so you don't have these exposures to damage. And that's a conscious decision to. And that's a conscious decision to build the free cash and allocate free cash in that direction. So we've got to get up, I think we're on the stick with our capital budgeting. And so now our insurance needs to reflect the positive steps we've taken forward to be more responsible owners. And I'm just not seeing it. For the longest time, I was asking, you know, why can't we get a discount for having an accredited police department? That's a big deal. Your risk exposure with the Douglas Police Department is far less than it is in other communities where they don't do the training, they don't have the protocols, and they don't have the right experience. I think the whole First Amendment thing is an example of how training and mature judgment can save you a lot of trouble. We do this stuff routinely. I think this is going to be the first year they might offer us a small credit because the department's accredited, but we might get a whole lot of more play. So, but that conversation goes to shopping the business. It doesn't go to how you shop it, right? But I certainly think that in terms of budgeting your time so you're not overwhelmed with a ton of information all at once, having Maya come in as the incumbent, talk about the status, you could do it, the finance committee could do it, somebody should, you get some preliminary answers to questions, might be a perfectly good way to start the
It just feels right to me. Yeah, I'm not a big fan of insurance in general. And, you know, maybe the respect of having them come forward just, you know, may pay dividends for a 15-minute, 20-minute phone conversation. Our concerns of rising costs may, in fact, help.
And I should add this, that Maya is a creature of the MMA. Douglas is a member, a dues-paying member of the Massachusetts Municipal Association. And so as a creature of our parent organization, it's perfectly intelligent courtesy to have them come to the meetings.
Yeah.
So we can try to line that up.
I wouldn't wait too long, though.
No, no, no time to wait. So it'll have to be your next meeting.
That was maybe my question.
It's that right, right? So we want to get this for July 1. We know we've got to hustle.
Just wondering about the timeline and transitioning over. Okay.
And then what if we just took our rider or our proof of insurance, slapped that on an RFP and said, match this, apples to apples, what is your cost? Take the broker out of it altogether, if you can.
If that's the way you want to go about it, that's the way I'll do it.
I'm just a bit balling. I have to throw it on it, but...
We didn't put this on for a vote tonight. Took a little bit uncomfortable to push it to a vote now.
Yep. It's a good discussion point for the next meeting.
Your direction on how you want to go about it, we can set you. But we put it on next agenda.
Remind me I said that because I'll forget.
That's a good idea.
No, it'll be on the agenda. You can't forget.
All right.
That was it for goals. I think that's where we end.
Before you jump off goals, you did bring up the highway bond, just to note that town administrator and myself have been extremely aggressive on trying to push that project forward. We had a conference call with a company to do the dam inspection about a week ago. We've engaged with them. Weston and Sampson's doing their 15% design to get ready for the spring town meeting. They've already had their civil engineering out, done all their site work, so we're just waiting for their final documentation so we can check off the last two boxes so we can close on that piece of property.
Thank you. Do you have anything more, Matt, in your report, perhaps?
The report is different.
Okay.
But I can be quick. Just a quick note, we pretty much have had a flash freeze tonight, so on your way out, be extremely careful. If it's shiny, it's ice. Lesson I learned walking to my mother's apartment in Whitensville just before this meeting and pretty much going rear end over elbows almost. It really happened fast. So we've had two water main breaks the last week and a half, week really. And hats off and a shout out to our water department and our highway department, the folks worked. I don't even want to tell OSHA how much they worked. I'm just going to say a lot.
Extremely hard.
They worked really, really hard, really long hours. Lousy weather, people not slowing down, water in the hole. I think everybody gets the point. Really appreciate the dedicated voting service that they put out. The first break probably cost, you know, shut off more people than the second one, but the second one was nasty in its location and the difficulty of the work. One of the things, so I actually Googled this. I don't know if it's Chinese AI or Google's AI, I'm pretty sure it's Google's AI, but I Googled the phrase, why do water lines break at hydrants first? And the answer that came back, there's a whole bunch of articles about it, that hydrants, because they're made out of metal, they're above ground, they're exposed to extreme cold, and the pipe starts to freeze from ground down. Now frost line, if you're a gardening geek like me, frost is down almost two feet. So the pipe froze down almost two feet. So as soon as the weather started to thaw and we got some rain and we were pushing 45, 46 degrees Fahrenheit, all that ice, that wasn't really going to go anywhere. Now it's free-flowing water and it starts to bubble up and you start to see those flows right at the tee, right in front of those two different hydrants. So the possibility of this freeze-thaw cycle that we're on this coming week, generating more of this activity, should not be discounted. Probably see another one. The play won't be a big deal. I wouldn't rush to conclusions about the age of the system. Obviously, that contributes. But the real factor here is this unusually cold winter. We haven't had a winter of this cold for a long time. And that's when the age starts to play out a little bit, right? So how deep was the hydrant buried? Was it deep enough way back when it was installed? There was no such thing as insulation or other frost-free technology available, so they're more likely to pop than the newer ones. But I just wanted to thank you guys for all the time. One other weather-related issue as we go into burning season. We are still in a significant drought. We're in a level-two significant drought in central Massachusetts. That was updated in January 8th is the last time that a report was put out. We've had a little bit of precipitation since then, but not enough to meet our monthly average. So if you recall, we had an extremely wet spring. We had a relatively dry summer, a very dry fall. We had a little bit of relief right after Thanksgiving into December. And now we've had a little bit of snow here, but just not very much, nowhere near as much as we usually do. So as we head into the spring season, it's extremely dry, dry in the woods and dry everywhere else. So if you please monitor the fire chief's declaration of whether it's safe to burn or not before you do any burning. Make sure you have your permit, and then the day is over. I believe we are approaching the conclusion of the security camera project with schools. I signed pretty much the last warrant today. I think we have some fisheye cameras that are still waiting to be installed because they'll take a little bit longer to get them. But that's a really big project, and it's coming to a conclusion. So interested to see the system fully integrated and operational. It was a difficult and at times challenging process to award that bid and get the funding source lined up to take care of it because prices were all over the place and most, much higher than we all expected. But very happy with the vendor's performance. Other than one sort of weird glitch with personalities on the job a couple months ago, it's otherwise been extremely smooth work there. All good news. I think you won't be surprised to learn that one of our highway trucks really did just die this week. Combination of stress of plowing and the stress of the job tricks and the warm means. The head gassing went on it, and so now it's basically a mosquito-controlled truck. Put the right stuff in, cool it. So, yeah, it's dead. And it was scheduled to be replaced. New trucks will be here at the end of this calendar year. It was going to come on the surface anyway, but it's dead. It's dead as well. Terms of other updates at this point, we're just deep into the budget season and making headway with the finance committee. They've interviewed police and highway. I think we have fire coming up and some of the smaller boards. As previously mentioned, there's not a lot of history in this budget process this year, so it should come along very quickly. Other than that, I don't have anything I can discuss here. We have to go to executive session, but there is an important matter in between them.
Any topics not reasonably anticipated 48 hours in advance of tonight's meeting? Say is none.
Yes, there is.
Oh, yeah, 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 right. You told me about that. You prepped me. You know...
I told you there was one more important thing.
I got a notice after this meeting was posted that the highway department is running out of, you know, an ice honey. I asked for more details today and was told that we really should resupply because we are anticipating bad weather on Thursday and on Sunday, Saturday really. So based on the conversation with the highway department, asking, or not really asking, telling you that I have authorized the department to exceed the budget by $75,000 beyond the amount approved by the spring town meeting. As you know, we are in the habit of covering this immediately special in the spring with free cash. So right now, I needed to release the money to get supplies for the food stores.
Need a vote on that?
No, that's notice. So that's that funny statute there. Check the 40th rule.
Now we'll look for motion to move into executive session.
I'll make a motion to move to executive session for potential litigation with MSHG and to reconvene to open session for the sole purpose of adjournment.
Motion's been made by Ross.
Second.
Seconded by Mike. Roll call vote.
Smith, aye.
Davis, aye.
Stevens, aye.
Patrick, aye.
Bone, an aye.